Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town hall meeting to discuss the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. I'm John Webster and I'm with the City of Tacoma Park Recreation Department. Tonight, folks, this is the very beginning of the process. There will be many more discussions. The survey group speaking tonight is doing just this one survey. You will have many more opportunities for community input. We are looking for input on programs and activities the community wants. The layout of the building and any ideas on whether or not we will stay at this location or move to a different location. Tonight, we are just looking at the responses we received from the initial survey, which was done by Walden Studio Architects, who is represented this evening by Mr. Mike Morgan. We will continue to take input from the community and you can send your comments through email to Gregory Clark, who is the Recreation Department Director. His business card is on the back table and we'll also make sure that we pass out his business card to all of you this evening. And without any further ado, I want to turn the program over to my friend, Mr. Mike Morgan.
We were contracted to develop a program of requirements. A program of requirements is really, in this case, where we are in this project is a listing of spaces that can sponsor or hold activities. The city has really been trying to do some due diligence here. This is a unique effort in the sense that this current center that we're sitting in is owned by Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission. It is leased to the Montgomery County Parks and Rec, who in turn sublets it to the city and gives them a stipend to operate it. They've offered to give this facility to the city in exchange for land in another part of the city. So what John and Greg and his team are doing are trying to figure out if we have a rec center, whether it's in this location or not, what is it made up of? Is it really worth keeping this building, for example? We believe that Park and Planning, you know, looking at a 40-year-old building knows that there's a lot that's involved in maintaining it. There would be a lot involved if they improved it. And so the city seems to be doing due diligence here to see if this is a worthwhile venture. We're actually in part three of a four-part process. Part one, we met with the Department of Recreation and we helped to understand what their mission, their needs, and their goals were. We completed an initial assessment of what they wanted, offered a report for that, and that became kind of the backbone for the survey that we've developed here this evening. Part two was actually creating the survey. By show of hands, how many of you completed the survey? Online? Three? Okay, great. Okay. What we're going to do next is we're going to take the responses from this survey and we're going to create a program of requirements. Again, a program is a listing of spaces in simple terms. It's not a building design. We're not worrying if you've got hardwood floors or audiovisual equipment in a room or anything like that yet. We're just simply trying to find out what kind of spaces are necessary in a facility that would meet your needs. From that, we're going to create three options and we're going to back those up with a means-tested cost estimate. The first option would be to look at this facility, keep it as-is, and make minor modifications without blowing out any walls or raising the roof or doing anything like that. A second option would be to demolish part of the facility and add on to it in a cost-effective manner. The third option would be either demolishing the entire facility or looking at a building program that might be built elsewhere. As we said in part one, we went through and we reviewed the mission and needs of the Recreation Department. We walked through this facility. We developed some tables from some Census Bureau data to look at the population and the mix here. Tacoma Park is a very densely populated area, about 17,000 people. We used U.S. Census Bureau data to get a snapshot of the demographic, both in age and gender, ethnicity, household type. And this map that you see on the wall shows the difference between the ZIP code boundary and the city of Tacoma Park boundary. The data that we're referring to from the U.S. Census is based on ZIP code. So the sample area there is a little bit larger than the city itself, but still emblematic of what you've got. We basically walked the site, took some photos to see what you have. It's interesting, this facility has been duplicated in Montgomery County and Prince George's County. In fact, we just completed a design for a renovated recreation center in Palmer Park that used this exact model for their building. So we're actually very fortunate in understanding exactly what this is composed of. Modest gym and workout spaces. A couple of things, as we go through the questions, I really need you to understand that, again, programming is not design. We ask questions to try to get a general feel for what the community needs or wants in a center. We're not designing at this time, but this will give us some rudder guidance to help the designers. Tacoma Park has a separate team that's preparing a master plan. We actually bid on both parts of this. One was the programming, the other was the master plan. They've awarded to another team who's going to take this data and they're going to look at this facility and other potential alternative sites for a recreation center. With that, the questions, as we presented them, are not necessarily restricted to this space. We wanted to try to get a general overview of what people wanted in a recreation center and what it might become. We'll superimpose those responses on this facility when we go back and look at the three options that we talked about a minute ago. Little to no renovation here, modest renovation, or completely getting rid of this facility or building something somewhere else. The greatest thing, we had a meeting last night and I think it was, we didn't say it early enough and so we developed this slide today. Today is really about understanding the broad dimension of what the community wants. It's detailed enough to be able to give a designer the ability to master plan a site, but once this project gets into design, many, many more details will be required, many, many more meetings will be held to get down to those details. As I said earlier, the responses from the survey are going to help us to develop a list of spaces and those spaces can be used for a multitude of things. We have an adage in our firm. When we go through programming with our clientele, we ask them a simple question. Do you need 100% of the space 100% of the time? More often than not, the answer is no. And so what that tells us as designers is that we can create space and that space can be used for a multitude of things. If you want to play cards or do fine art, you can do that in the same room. It really is just a function of time. How do you utilize the facility during the day? Maximize your time in the program? Question number one is, is a recreation center needed in Tacoma Park? Seems like a tripe question, but it's actually pretty important. If people don't think you need one, you don't really need to go much further in a survey. The percentage is that it is desired. Nearly 80% of respondents said that they would like to have a community center or a recreation center. We wanted to know what the focus of this facility should be. Should it be more health, wellness, and fitness? Or should it be more of a community center? And we didn't really differentiate between what a rec center and a community center was purposely, because we didn't want to create a bias there. But as you can see from the survey results, we had over 80% of respondents had a higher top priority that this should be a sports, fitness, and health and wellness type of facility. The community-based activities, we assume that people interpreted that to be less sports and fitness and maybe more clubs and games and things of that nature. But still, a majority, nearly 75% of the people, said that there should be community activities there. And we think this is really good. We think it's strong, too. We're seeing trends right now in recreation and community center development that don't really separate the sports and rec from other programs that are offered in the community. One goes back again to how do we manage it? How do we staff it economically? And then we're seeing organizations try to embrace more of an intergenerational approach into recreation centers. We recently completed a significant design effort for a church in Bowie who wanted to have a facility like this, but they wanted to intermingle all of the generations. So they have a full sports and rec component that has things that you saw in the survey for dance and weightlifting, a gymnasium, elevated running track, cardiovascular, full dance studio. But they also have a senior activity center there. They have a cultural component. This church is an ambassador and they bring people from around the world and they thought it important to have a cultural component that has a museum and a library. They also brought in a health component. They had a couple of minor treatment rooms, but had really more of a focus on counseling and mental health to help people through some of the issues that we're going through today. In addition to that, they had a full kitchen and banquet facility. So this main building could do many, many things. As a future phase, they were looking at an aquatics program, but their aquatics program was going to be based on therapy. They were going to have a therapy pool as opposed to an Olympic-sized swimming venue or something like that. They wanted, again, to be intergenerational and help people stay fit. The other great thing about that project was that they brought daycare facilities in. And they wanted to do that as a standalone. One, to support the community through the outreach of having a daycare, but also as a jobs creator. So we're seeing a lot of organizations embrace an intergenerational approach, a very multifunctional type of facility with a lot of programs to offer. So we think the community-based activities are important. Should the center have rentable areas for meetings, events, and parties? Working with Parks and Planning, they will be the first to tell you it's difficult to maintain these facilities without tax revenues. They usually don't make money. So we found it important to try to help bring revenue to these facilities where you can to offset many of the costs that they incur. We were encouraged to see that people have no, take really no exception to it and the majority of people think that it would be good to have rentable facilities. In this case as well, we think if a community center or a rec center becomes kind of a flag in the ground that you plant as victory for the community, the more they use it, the more they embrace it for things like graduations or training or weddings, receptions, things like that. Again, you've got space, you can use it and if it's designed properly, you can use it for many, many things. The center should have outdoor space for activities like football, basketball, soccer, and baseball. Large response to have these facilities here. We asked this question, one, because it would be removed from this site. The grass that you see outside doesn't belong to this facility. The property line is some 10 or 15 feet just outside the wall. So they really don't have a right to that space. It's not theirs. But we thought it was important, again, if this would become kind of a pivot point for the community, is it only limited to indoor activities? If not, and you could embrace outdoor activities, how many more people do you have crossing paths and supporting a notion of community? Please rank in order of preference the following indoor spaces and programs. This list was pretty much developed between us and the Parks and Rec Department. Some of that is predicated on current programs that they offer. Some of it is targeted at trying to enhance or improve programs. It gives us kind of an idea of the types of spaces. Again, I go back to what I said earlier about having 100% of the space, 100% of the time. It really doesn't matter what kind of space you create in many ways as long as you have it to be able to affect a function or a program. And so whether in the end you have a space for crafts or hobbies or a teen center or a childcare program, those things can take place interchangeably in many different ways. Should the center include space for senior citizens? Again, this is something that we're seeing as a trend, an intergenerational type of facility. We see a high response that senior programs should be offered in this kind of atmosphere. Is it important to have an indoor swimming pool or aquatics program in Tacoma Park? And this is really gauged at Tacoma Park in general, not necessarily within this facility. We can see, again, that people are in favor of such a program. Then we get a little bit more specific. If it is offered, should it be within the center? Trending down on that, I guess people could kind of take it or leave it. I think a lot of it will ultimately come to affordability, which was our next question, or I'm sorry, one of our questions that follows. You know, what should it cost to really do something like that? We got a lot of feedback on this question last night. How likely are you to use the center to attend youth programs? We figured out from the comments last night that it was probably a poorly worded question. Being a father and having kids of my own, I know I attend youth programs with them and that was the heart of the question. It wasn't solely at youth to eliminate others. So we think that probably wasn't a great question, but we did see that there was a mixture of response and actually the majority of people would, well, I guess it's actually about split. Who would attend and not attend? What kind of youth programs? Again, this kind of mimics what we talked about before. Just having space available to offer programs. What those programs are is important in terms of meeting community needs, but not as important as having space to carry them out. How likely are you to use adult programs at the center? This in the end may not have been a very good question either, because we probably had more adults answering the survey than youth. And since the survey locked out, or basically locked the survey into one computer, you couldn't have more people responding. That's why we also followed up with a question about how many people were living in your home. Trying to get a gauge on youth population and we'll balance that against the census data to see what the need might be there. What kinds of adult programs would you like to see? Similar kind of list. We advanced this a bit in terms of having healthcare screening and activities for seniors. A public health component would be a great resource here. One of the things that we found out in our preliminary study of this site is that the zoning for this property is mixed-use. In many ways, this rec center may not be solely the highest and best use for this property. It may be something that gets created that has maybe a low-income housing component over maybe a central services type of array and then maybe the community center is on the ground floor. Maybe it has a food service component. So there is much, much more you could do on this site than just a rec center. And so part of this was aimed at saying, okay, if we want to be community-based, if we want to help the community, what other things may be outside of sports and rec that we offer? And that's why we came in with some healthcare and senior activities again. If the Tacoma Park Rec Center had a fitness room with weight machines and treadmills, would you join if membership fees were required? Majority of people said yes. And then we asked them to respond, you know, what would they pay? Really trying to be affordable and fair. Majority of people would pay between $60 and $90 a year, which is a bargain. We plan at Fitness Now, I think is what, $10 a month, so $120 a year. We have not, we just closed the survey. We did not have a lot of time to break down all the responses to this, but there were a number of answers in different price ranges, what people would pay. And most people would pay about $100, so. Question 16, if Tacoma Park Rec Center had an aquatics facility, would you join if membership fees were required? Majority of people said yes. And we asked them what they would pay and we haven't studied all of that. But this varies widely from 75 to, you can see, 500 or 250, 150. I think overwhelmingly it's around $100. I will say that anytime you introduce water into a sports and rec program, it gets very expensive. Whether that water is frozen for ice skating or whether it's liquid for therapy pools or competitive swimming programs, operational costs get very, very high. Indoor facilities even more than outdoor because of the mechanical systems that have to drive those. You have to be very conscious of humidity control so that you don't get mold and mildew issues. You've got water treatment. You've got specialty staff like lifeguards that have to run the facility. So it gets very expensive quickly. How often would you likely use the recreation center? Check all that apply. We've got a lot of use in the center, but what was curious to us was the next question. It said, how often do you currently use it? So we had a lot of response that people would use it, but we also have an indication that people are not using what they already have. And there are a lot of reasons for that. We went through some of these and we'll show you later in the response. But a lot of it had to do with amenities. There is obviously a lot of competition for sports and rec elsewhere. And if the facilities don't match something like a Planet Fitness that's only $10 a month, why would you go back into the closet here and lift weights? It's difficult. And then the fact that this facility is limited by only having two activity rooms per se. Again, how much can you do? So we understand some of what was behind that, but we need to get into it more. One of the things that we'll do is we, you'll see we have the question about drive time in here. I'll tell you more about that and how that relates to what we just witnessed. Do you currently use the services at the community center? Again, fairly split there. Looks like special events get a lot of play. The Department of Recreation gave us a listing of all of the programs they offer and there are quite a few. And it seems like they're pretty packed over there. This facility needs more use and they're working out how to do that. What time of day would you most likely use the rec center? We developed this question based on a response from Parks and Rec that they would like a 12-hour program. So we started at 9:00 in the morning and ended at 9:00 at night. What we found is that many, many more people would rather be able to get to the rec center as early as 5:00 in the morning so they can do their morning workout or whatever before they go to work and maybe even stay open a little bit later to facilitate a need after work. Will you support having the city raise funds through a bond? Certainly overwhelmingly, people think that's a good idea. One of the questions last night was, well, will that raise our taxes? I can't answer that, so. It's good to see that people would endorse it, though. How far in drive time would you be willing to travel to use the facility? Obviously, people want to drive shorter distances and shorter times. This area is really tough on traffic. We did not ask, you know, how far would you be willing to travel by bicycle or walking or jogging? To us, it was somewhat obvious that we're in Tacoma Park. So if you know where this is and you live on the outer reaches, are you willing to travel that distance? That would be an individual issue. But getting in your car is a big deal and this one for us is something that we will use to superimpose on a map and find out 10 to 15 minutes from this address what else is available and what might be taking away from people using this facility. So we'll try to find all the Planet Fitnesses and things like that and say, okay, here's your competition. And how does that help you then? If you decide to design it and build it, how does that help you then to develop programs and resources here that beat your competition? Because people are always in competition for resources. How far in travel time for public transportation? About the same. People willing to drive, go a little bit further just by virtue of the issues associated with that motor transportation. Should the center offer food service? This question again was aimed in two ways. One, because we know that we have a mixed-use zoning site. So you could offer something like Starbucks or a bakery or even a restaurant if it was more than just a rec center. That revenue could go to offset some costs here, create positive cash flow. Could also create traffic. Again, having people crash into one another and be with one another and create community. We developed and designed a senior activity center for Parks and Planning a few years back. And one of the biggest components for the seniors that we worked with to develop that program was a place to have a cup of coffee and a donut with their son or daughter who might drop them off. It wasn't adult daycare. It was an activity center and everybody there was very active. But they wanted a place where they could sit down and just have a cup of coffee together. Maybe not with their kids, but with somebody else. So these kinds of things we think are important to kind of force those collisions between people and enhance our relationships. The other part of this, too, in terms of a catering kitchen, if we're going to have a place for rental facilities, kitchens have an infrastructure cost to them. But in many cases, without that infrastructure, it makes it difficult to rent out a facility. Senior center that I just alluded to, we put a full-service catering kitchen in there, but it wasn't so much a full-service kitchen. We set it up so that caterers could come in. They could plug in their hot carts. They had a stove and they had cleanup facilities. Also enabled them at that center to offer daily meals. They have a vendor that comes in every day and the seniors that attend that center can get a meal. They can also then distribute meals to the community, to those who are infirmed and may need assistance. They now have a springboard to do that in this kitchen facility enables it. Are you a resident of Tacoma Park? They wanted to get a feel for who was doing this. The survey was not limited to anyone. It was listed on the city's website and anybody could take the survey. They simply wanted to know who was responding and they wanted to know what ward that folks lived in. And these are the tallies. We asked how many people were in your home and we will go through and look at that. We then downloaded the responses and we've highlighted a few that kind of piqued our attention. One of the very first ones is, why are we spending money on this? You know, again, it's a great question. If people don't think it's required, then it's a great question. Overwhelmingly, though, people think that it's necessary. Better distinction between community center and recreation center? When signing up for classes, it's confusing for some people. There is a strong preference for one or the other due to location. The rec center would need to be a complete remodel for me to want to spend time there because I live near the community center, which seems to have more classes. So this goes back to what we talked about earlier. The program that we're developing is creating space. How Parks and Rec works to develop programs for those spaces and uses is entirely predicated on the clock, when they happen during the day, location, if one is more central to another. And then in the case of a rec center, it could very well be facility-based. You're not going to play basketball at the community center. So that's a differentiator. Another comment was safer and more welcoming environment, better outside lighting, better qualified instructors, trained to adjust activity for injuries. Tacoma Park hires poorly-trained instructors, class after class, have given up on exercise classes. Sounds like a negative, but I think it's positive. I think everybody wants to improve in what they do if they want to execute things at an excellent level and I've seen nothing but great things out of Greg and his staff and John. I think they're doing a good job from what I can see. But even still, it just says that there's always room for improvement. Should be better transportation options? We talked about that. This part of the street, and we've done very little study on the master plan and the Master Planning Group will do that. But they've set this corridor up so that we have this access road. We have the sidewalk before you get to the main street to make it more pedestrian-friendly. But we do agree that it's difficult sledding around here and something that needs to be addressed. Request for locker rooms? I don't use the rec center now because the workout area is too segregated from staff. Workout is too secluded. That's a great notion, a great thing to note. Many of the centers that we designed for Parks and Planning, they are very limited on the amount of staff that they could have and so security becomes a very big issue. And what we've been able to do practically is to centralize staff so that they actually have physical, visual lanes to see people coming and going, either in and out the doors or going to various programs. It's not always ideal. You can't see around corners. But as a design concept and as a programming concept, we will certainly recommend that we have a secure facility, both from a physical and a, I would say, maybe even a surveillance standpoint. Locker rooms would be helpful. Upgraded bathrooms. Certainly, the bathrooms here are in as good a shape as they can be for a 40-year-old building, but they don't comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Those would get renovated completely. Community rental, when organizing a party, celebration, birthday, or wedding, they think that's an evolving need and like it. Pedestrian and bicycle friendly. We talked about that. We think that's key in this community. Summer camps, affordable and fun. Goes again to the aspect of different programs that can be offered here. Better and bigger signage. Better and bigger signage? That was a big one for us. Wonder how many people know that this is even here? Maybe they're not using it because they don't know it exists in some form or fashion. We should really focus on low-income community, on what the low-income community near the rec center needs, not what people like me with comfortable incomes and proximity to community center and Old Town need. I think everybody wants affordable access, and certainly, community centers are at the hub of that, and many of them are very affordable. Sufficient parking space? That's a big challenge, certainly on this site. And in terms of sustainability, parking and stormwater management runoff is a big deal. To be able to expand this site and have adequate parking will be a major issue to overcome, and the master planners will look at that. Keep it on the east side? That must be an east side joke, I don't get it, but I like their enthusiasm. Daycare would be wonderful, as would programs for special-needs people. And some of the stuff that we've done, daycare is a great thing to help the community, it's a job generator, but it does take a different kind of staff, you know, different kind of insurance policies and things like that. It's not uncomplicated. Center really needs to have a broad socioeconomic appeal. The location of the current rec center feels very out of the way, and I don't know how many residents would actually use it as opposed to non-residents. I don't want my tax dollars supporting disproportionate non-resident use. Right now, the county has a fee-based system, and I believe this center would still have a fee-based system of some sort. Whether it would be proportionate to city residents or not, that's something they have to work out and really just crunch the numbers there. Another comment, either indoor or outdoor, artificial turf soccer fields? Had a lot of comment about this last night, you know, do we need to have big fields just for big sports? Shouldn't we have a place to play horseshoes, or bocce ball, or badminton, or something like that? Sure, by all means. Those take up a lot less space. But the larger turf fields and applications give more people access. You can, obviously, in a soccer field, you can play soccer, you can play football, you can play lacrosse, you can play rugby. There's even a surge right now, I think, for people to start playing cricket. Actually, you need a little bit bigger field than a soccer field to play cricket, but they have a lot more application, many more applications. Needs to be open early in the morning? We talked about that. You know, our survey was limited to 12 hours, 9 to 9. We hear that loud and clear. Again, more emphasis on special needs and handicap services, early morning hours again. It would be unfortunate if the fitness and rec programming for the rec center weakens to make room for broad community classes that can be housed in many types of community spaces. Again, this goes back to programming. Do you need 100% of the space, 100% of the time? This is really a plea to get the programming right between all the facilities so you can maximize what you have. A performance space? The community is dying for cultural arts space that allows for indoors and ideally outdoor concerts. So, and that's great. There's nothing wrong with being able to set something up like that in a facility like this. If you had a small stage, you've all been in school, what they call cafeteriums, cafeteria and a stage, and it can do a lot of different things. Piney Branch Elementary School pool already exists. Why not build upon that resource? Good question, and that's why we didn't initially tie the pool to this facility. There are resources available. What's the cost of investing in there? I would prefer to see my money and energy invested in the Piney Branch pool. Another comment about early morning hours? I don't understand why arts and activities are being considered for the rec center. Again, it's a multifunctional space. Need classes offered during the daytime for kids under 5? Keep Piney Branch cool? Piney Branch is functioning, I don't see a need for additional pool. So people are cost-conscious. It's a good thing. So that's the overview on the survey. Do you have any questions?
I might have missed this because I came in a little late, but I'm curious how much, I didn't see this in the survey. Did you compare what Tacoma Park has in facilities compared to other communities in Montgomery County?
We have not made that comparison. What we are going to do is some demographics, again, based on drive time, to find out what other facilities are in the area and what people might be using. I think we got a very good indication from the survey results of what types of programs people would want. And again, we also know that once we create a space, it can be used for many, many different things.
Sounds like this is a facility that would be paid for and maintained by the city of Tacoma Park as opposed to Montgomery County, which maintains other recreation centers. Is that right?
I believe it is, John. The whole purpose of this study is to understand what, they're trying to count the cost. What would it cost? It's one thing to say, we're going to give you this wonderful gift. It's another thing for that gift to suck you dry in terms of infrastructure costs and everything else.
Right, so they wouldn't be giving, the county, it sounds like, would not be involved in this, is that correct?
I don't know what those discussions are, and if any money is coming to the table or anything like that, but the issue here is this would become a Tacoma Park city.
How good for the county!
Sorry. Well, we understand that, you have to understand, the Montgomery County, our Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission, they have a Montgomery County side and a Prince George's County side, and we understand that the Montgomery County side is trying to get out of the rec center business. Prince George County side is trying to actually enhance many, many other facilities.
That's interesting. Thank you.
This survey, it went out on the listserv, and I missed it. How can I give my input after the fact? Because I have many concerns and suggestions.
You can get, John can give you a card, and you can contact them directly. We're actually shutting the survey down today electronically, but they have paper copies, and we're welcome to take suggestions.
My name is Doris Duarte, and I'm president of the Tennis Association Board, 7401 New Hampshire Avenue, Hampshire Towers. I would like to know, have you looked at the services that the Tacoma Park Center on Maple Avenue has compared to what is in this recreation center?
We have. We received a complete listing of their calendar of events and the programs that they offer. They've also given us some attendance figures on that, so we know what they're operating and serving at that facility. That led, again, to a lot of the questions that we developed here in terms of programs. In the end, if the decision goes forward to design this facility, the city will have to really look at the two venues and figure out how they want to balance those various programs.
Okay, and then my other problem I have, I would not like for this building to be torn down or forgotten because there are at least over 200 kids at Hampshire Towers that rely on this rec center, especially on Friday evening, and also the after-daycare. What a lot of the residents have complained about is that the majority of the services is at the Maple property, you know, near the town center. We understand that is where the city of Tacoma Park is, but what about the residents that live Hampshire Gardens and in this area? We feel that more services should be provided for the residents and the kids that live on this side of Tacoma Park.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious, you know, this survey was sent out via email, via listserv. It's an online, English-based survey. And I'm curious, as you move forward, is there a plan for other conversations with residents who may not have actually been able to respond to this survey based on access and language?
That's a great point. I will say that we have not discussed that. We're trying to get a broad overview of what people would like. Granted, it is an English-based survey, and I know that there is a high Latino population here, so your points are all taken. I'll bring that up in the report. I think it's worthy. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for coming.